I'd like to call to order the Technology Subcommittee meeting of April 4th, 2024. Please call a roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Ms. Lauer?
Here.
Please stand first. Look to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Pardon me, but the open meeting law, any person to make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have any citizen input time?
We do not.
No citizen input time. We're going to go right to the item number 3.01, Madam Superintendent, on the following items.
Good afternoon. I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Cabral. We have quite a few items on this discussion item, some contracts and some new purchases, so he'll walk us through each of these.
Good evening, everyone. So the first piece that we'd like to talk about is Frontline, the HR management system. Currently, Frontline is used for our attendance. So an employee would go in in the morning, request a sick day, vacation day. It would then go through the process of flagging the supervisor for approval all the way through to HR, where they would then keep track of accruals. That is how we use the software currently. Over this past school year, we've seen some areas where we'd like to improve processes, one of which being getting paperless with overtime, green sheets, stuff of that nature. Frontline now offers, in their package, just this. We have looked at a number of different programs and we came to the conclusion that, A, because we're already using Frontline, the employees know how to use it, it's not going to change the way it looks. And also, the bigger determination for me on the technical side was that this automatically talks to Munis, so there's no script writing that's going to have to take place. The two products already can coexist, and it also will tie in nicely with Aspen RX2, our student information system. So typically, what will happen with this now is we'll use a custodian, for example. A custodian will work overtime in overtime event. There'll be no more paper. They'll only be allowed to fill in their time card, per se, online in the building that they're offered the overtime. So for example, if the overtime was offered inside of Fonsica, they'd only be able to start their in-time and out-time in this building, because what it's going to do is it looks for the building IP address. So they wouldn't be able to pick up their cellphone, leave, drive home to Swansea, and then an hour later, check out and say that they had finished their shift. So it's true to the time, because they have to be in the building. Then what will happen is it'll fire off a process, however we decide within each individual department, and it can be used across all of the departments. For example, in Mr. Pacheco's case, it would go to whoever would approve the overtime, you know, would be the custodial director or assistant director for the event. Then it would fire off to Mr. Almeida's department to payroll, and then once it's checked off there, it would fire off to the last process, which would be on Kevin's side. When he runs the payroll, it would automatically connect that into Munis, so there'd be no paper anywhere there. Along the way, there are all checks and balances, so an employee couldn't just go in, and I couldn't say that I worked eight hours of overtime shoveling snow on a Saturday, because the event is not created in the system. Also, the firing of the relays for the people, so like, Mr. Pacheco didn't have that event, so they wouldn't be able to put in for it. An event that can be created in an emergency, so say, for example, we had a water main leak in the building. Someone could go in from facilities, Mr. Pacheco or one of his directors, and put in the event, and then overtime could be assigned to that. That can be done at any point up until payroll is fired with Mr. Almeida at the end. But in the process at the beginning, everything is covered. So even on the IT side, I have technicians that will work extra. It goes through the check and balance process, signatures, digital signatures that are timestamped and dated, and then given back to the employee, so the employee has that record. And what it does, it also allows us to run two sets of reports. It'll allow us to run the report in Frontline for payroll, so that Mr. Almeida has a backup, and it'll also allow us to run the same payroll report in Munis. So now there's, you know, double checks and balances, because both systems will talk to each other. So in anticipation of this, the training, what would happen, and you see the breakdown of costs here, initially, they would prorate us for the rest of this year, and we're past April 1st now, so that amount is going to prorate a bit. There is a one-time fee of $15,600 to get our systems to talk, because even though they're compatible, every district uses it a little bit differently, so there are some things in the backend that they would make their script do correctly. They would run tests with the departments, and then with Mr. Almeida and myself in IT, to make sure we're satisfied with the way everything fires off on the payroll side. Then after that, moving forward, you see, the year total would be $60,502. There are a number of reasons for that. So right now, typically, Frontline, we spend about $39,000 a year just on Frontline time and attendance. We, however, in the next page, and I just put a little grid together so you could all see, we have still three pieces of software that are owned by Power School that we are still using at this time. The first one is Talent Records Power School. So when a new employee comes in, they fill out all of their paperwork online. That then fires off into our student information system, populates the paperwork. That piece would be gone, we would get rid of that piece, because within the umbrella of Frontline, they offer the same piece, because we'd be using the payroll function, we would turn that piece on as well. So we would get rid of that $23,000 right off the bat. The next piece is, they use what's called applicant tracking in Power School, AppleTrack. So basically, when somebody applies, that is what the principal would get with the resume. That's part of Frontline. It looks a little bit different, but we wouldn't have to pay for that, because it's under the one umbrella. What I'm looking for as a CIO is to try to make the process live under one hood, so that way, there are not places where mistakes can be made, where data can be misconstrued or lost. Everything will live under that one hood. Then the last piece is what everyone is familiar with, is School Spring. That's their job board, where we would post the board. And if you look at it now, Mr. Agia, you know from your district, a lot of districts are trying to do different things to try to gain people in. Frontline owns something now that's called K-12 Job Spot. And if you put the two products side by each, K-12 Job Spot has, at current, like 30-something thousand war jobs posted right now than School Spring does. My only recommendation for this first year, and I would leave it up to the people at this table and the full committee, is I would like to run School Spring and the K-12 Job Spot simultaneously for the first year, just because we know that we're having a hard time getting people to apply for jobs, retention. I'd like to run both products, because under Frontline, we're going to receive it in K-12 Job Spot. But I'd also like to try to push us out there a little bit more with School Spring. Starting to hear some things with the Mass Tech Director List Service Group, that School Spring's going to change some of the way that they do things to push out the jobs. So on that regards, that's the only piece that I would be asking to retain, which is, you know, just around $6,500, the School Spring portion, but everything else, I would sunset at the end of this year, and I would put everything into, you know, under the hood of Frontline. I have demoed all of the pieces. Mr. Almeida has had his department in there a number of times. We've asked the questions. I've talked to a number of school districts. Just recently, talked to Mr. Tetro over in New Bedford, my counterpart in New Bedford. They're very happy. They've started to roll out these systems. And then we also, in depth, went over with Mr. Coogan and his team with the software company, the things that we'd like to see happen with the software. And again, the biggest reason to move in a direction of this software and to put everything under one hood is so that we can be, in 2024 and beyond, with paperless transactions for payroll, overtime, green sheets, stipend sheets. Everything would finally be paperless, and we'd be able to control everything. There would be many more checks and balances, and I think it was one of Mr. Almeida's employees said, wow, this is pretty good. This would be efficient for us. It would help us in the long run. This would make it much more efficient for everyone, once they all got to learn the process. I need this to go to the full committee next week for approval either way, because in the backend, we've got some lift to do. I have to pull data from X2, I have to pull data from Munis, so that we can marry those in, so that we can start to run these tests over the summer months. The employees would be trained in the last few months of May, early June, just to get an idea of the software, and then we would roll with this July 1st moving forward.
Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Lauer, please.
Yes, so just quickly, the K-12 Job Spot, do we have that now?
We do not.
Right.
So anybody could use it. We just don't pay into it. If we were going to be a district that wanted to buy into it, it's 18 grand a year just to buy into that one software. Under the umbrella of what we're doing, because we're a current customer, we're not even going to see that they, you know, they put it into our one-time total. And just so we know, at that 39, 40 grand that we pay every year for Frontline, we're looking at probably a 14% increase, no matter what. Software's all going up, so no matter what, we would have been paying a little bit more for Frontline, but we'll actually be saving money, because we're going to sunset those other Power School products.
So this 65, 6502, is that a total? Is that counting the 215s?
No. So the 215s are a one-time thing, because this is backend work. So because we're using the two systems, what we asked the vendor to do was, we wanted to try to separate it a bit, so we could get the backend work running, but at the same time, get the training going at the same time.
Okay.
So you'll notice that the initial prorated term is, they're going to turn the system on, so that we can build and train, and then that other one-time implementation fee is going to be the geek speak piece behind the scenes for me.
So are we paying, are we going to continue paying these costs at the same time?
No, so those are going to sunset.
So those are just going to dissolve?
Correct. So in July, you won't see me, the only contractor you'll see me in July will be for School Spring. And again, that'll be for a one-year, to try both, and then we'll let the new HR director decide what they want to do at that point.
So we won't need these services to get these services up and going?
Correct.
That's accurate.
And I just wanted to point out that the initial prorated term, that's for the last three months of this year, that was prorated. That number's going to drop a little bit, because we're after April 1st. The 15,000 in the one-time cost, that also includes, in the scope of our onboarding documents, we send them, draft the documents to the people, the benefits and everything else.
Yep, yep.
And all those documents are customized by the job that the person's going to hold. And so some of that is the setup, because all those documents have to be digitized and created in a new form, et cetera. So that's the setup, the training, the back-to-back group setup stuff.
How long has New Bedford had this system?
So New Bedford has Frontline for the attendance side just as long as we have.
Like us, right.
And they're like three or four months into unreal.
So just months?
Just months. And, but what I will say is, Winthrop and also Wilmington, Massachusetts, they can't speak more highly of it. They said they wish they would have done it sooner.
Were they all paper as well?
All paper.
And they transitioned?
They transitioned off, and it's been so much easier for them to handle and manage.
Thank you. Are you?
Can we just, no, for the record, Mr. Bailey's here. My question is on the overtime piece that, you know, I've been a big stickler for overtime and sign-offs and all of that stuff. So as you were talking, I was stopped to wonder, is that even feasible, when you think about it being in the building? It could seem to me, there's probably opportu, I know you said an emergency spot. Do the directors feel like that's okay? Okay?
So what we're going to do, and Mr. Pacheco and I have sat down and talked already, I sat down with Mr. Almeida, we have a number of options that we can set it up with. We can set it up with what's IP subnetted, which would mean, if they're in this building working the overtime, they could only check themselves in and out in this building. The other piece is, they could do it within the FRPS school network, but they would never be able to do it from a personal cellphone or an outside network. So we have options, and based on the type of event, that's something that we would sit down as a central office team and decide, in payroll and in operations and what every department does, because the schools would do different things with green sheets than the custodial. There would be a process that would fire off, and we can decide how it would be filled out. It would all have to be electronically. I'm anticipating that we would put a station in each custodial area, so that way, they can go check their email and they can do their.
I was just, as you were talking, I thought it was a done deal already. So there is options to talk to those and say, well, this works for them, not to them. And then you said about the overtime, like.
It's scalable in either direction. If we wanted to pull back and make it more stringent, or we could open it up and make it a little easier.
It doesn't have to be that complicated.
Correct.
We just have to hold people accountable to, don't put in overtime that you don't need, and somebody's got to approve your overtime. Like the new system, since the last things we've had go wrong, is more like sign-offs and what is it for?
Yep.
So it sounds like you're taking that and going to put it into.
Making it electronic.
Yeah.
We're just going to digitize it.
But it's not locking anybody in.
So we currently have two sign-offs on every overtime. And with the two sign-offs, it's supervisor, I have the last sign-off. But this system here will allow us, the paper trail will be cleaner, more accurate, and then we've already started instituting things, like all of the sheets are electronically produced, so you can get electrical copies and photocopies and other items currently being that documented. All that stuff is kind of on a regular, there's a few employees that are still having trouble getting the electronic piece down. But this is, this will be, on our side, will be a slower goal, because I need to be sure that I can keep track of the system.
Right. I was worried if we're just going to go, we had to go one thing, and then people are coming in and they can't get paid, and, you know, so.
Yeah. So from my standpoint, it's better process just for the paper stack. A lot of times, when it's happening, it's a translation, and people don't get paid. It doesn't happen as often as it used to. We've got one process that works better now. There's been many, many cases where, I'll find out on Friday, because that's what payday is, that's such-and-such person getting paid, for whatever reason. And at least this way, this is literally a timed project, where somebody does the work, the department has it all funded, it goes directly to payroll, it's done.
Right, yeah.
So I don't have to worry about where the documentation is. You know, because there are a lot of times, there are items that happen that are outside of the program that I haven't aware of, that blow the prominence of all those principles up. And that's happened, so when that happens, at least this way.
Everybody can look at it, you can say, check that out.
And everybody can look at it, and it's done, and it's in the payroll, it's timed, it's not. From my standpoint, it's a big difference.
My other question was just on the application process, so I don't know if you ever applied in Fall River, and I haven't in a long time, but trying to help some people, it is not easy to apply, like, because you have to create your account, sign in, you know, like, it's not complicated per se to everybody, but it's also, it's, sometimes it's not as easy as I would like it to be to say, hey, apply for a job. And then it's like, you know, and I think this is, the point of this is to streamline it somehow.
It is, and the other reason that we went with this company is their K-12 environment, and when you go to apply for a job, they actually have it built so that it's flawless on a phone, and most people are doing it from a phone. So when we get to that piece with Mr. Coogan's team, we'll be able to put those documents together and streamline that process and make it easier.
One of the other things that was attractive to me as an HR personnel, is that right now we're using a one-size-fits-all application, and so there's sections for degrees and other things that really don't apply to someone, right? You apply for a cafeteria job, a major's job, a custodial. So the ability to customize the application, so if you're applying for that position, you can leave out those extraneous pieces, and it's a simplified process. Over the last six to 12 months, we've done more and more, come in for a visit, and one of my people who sit with you, put out a Chromebook and all, all through the process, because it's been a challenge. This is a little bit more customizable, it's a better problem.
Any other questions? So this is a discussion vote to refer them all. I'd like to go to them all, and if we have questions or tweaks, you guys can make those for the full committee, and then we'll vote them on and lock it up there.
Okay.
Next, Van Kirches.
All right, so as you all know, COVID hit our technology department. Literally, we built from the ground up. One of the biggest pieces now is trying to jockey getting pieces of equipment, tools per se, to buildings. They're using, our guys are using their cars, or I'm having to have to borrow a nutrition van, or having to get Ken to let us borrow a truck, which he's always been helpful with. But his department has also grown bigger, so it's been difficult. What I'm requesting is that we purchase a van, so that I can retrofit it with the tools, the ladders, that the people that are out replacing cameras and are out in the building using the tools every day, have somewhere that they can homebase, they can go through, have everything there, also deliver stuff as needed. Right now, we're kind of using a hodgepodge approach. Russ Lewis's team is delivering, we're borrowing vans, et cetera. I can tell you that I called, and I got the VEH 110 Contract User Guide, because there are other places where we could look. I looked at local dealerships. I looked at also changing the brand that we use, because we've historically been a Ford shop. Had conversations with a Dodge dealer locally, actually on Route 44, and they could have done better on pricing for vans, but then did some homework and talked to a district that I used to work at in a past life, and a couple of other districts, and they have nothing but engine problems. So I went right back to the high-top van, because it'll fit the V, the ladders and the tool racking systems that our employees would like to use would fit in there. It is through MHQ. There is a difficulty getting the vans right now. The van we have, as soon as this paperwork goes through, will be put into the queue. At last check with Mr. Pacheco, I think they were like six ahead of us, but we were within under 10 to get the van. So I anticipate that we would have the van for the start of next school year. Of course, it would have to be branded. Mr. Pacheco's going to help me with that, send it out to be branded. We'd have LadderX put on it, and then this would just allow my, the low-voltage electrician and the infrastructure technician to just get up and go and start their day, and not be worrying about dropping tools off, coming back, dropping cameras off, back and forth.
Questions?
Yes. So was this, I don't remember seeing it on the wish list. Why wasn't this in the budget?
It wasn't in the budget, because Mr. Almeida and I had the discussion, and through central staff, we had some money this year that he said that I could use to do this. We actually had a van, and because we had a paperwork process, and we didn't have a subcommittee to get it to me, we lost out on that van. They sold it to someone cash, like, three days before we were going to have our initial meeting, and then we moved it. So I lost out on this van, but this was something that I was trying, we were trying to do for this year, and Mr. Almeida was able to financially, so that's why it wasn't on the wish list.
Now, we're not giving out stipends anymore, right? For transportation, cut that. Is that, like, are we giving out stipends for using their own vehicles for this purpose?
For this purpose?
Yes, for this purpose. I just wanted to, okay. What's my next question? Do we have any of these kind of, these, I know you're looking for vans, but do we have any sort of these kind of vans in the district now?
So these are the vans that nutrition uses. Facility's just got one for.
So they're similar.
Shipping and receiving, they're similar. Yes. And then the plan is going to be, Ken and I have sat down, the master plan is going to be, he'll be looking for vans in the future. One of the old, like, style vans would become an extra van that we could use to ship Chromebooks back and forth. So we have like a little bit of a, this is a short-term plan to get our tools to where they need to go, and then Ken and I have a longer-term plan, so that we have the vehicles to get the Chromebooks to and from.
And currently, we have no vehicles.
In technology.
For this purpose in technology.
Zero.
And one is enough?
One will start us in the right direction. Yep. And then I like, I've always been open with you guys, if there's something I need, I would come to the superintendent, to central office, and then we'd come back and request if we.
I mean, it just sounds crazy that you're borrowing vans all over the district, that we didn't have a van. And I know we're expanding the, you know, the department, but.
I will say, the one thing that's been a plus is I literally can call Ken at any moment, and he makes it happen, whether or not they wait, I have to wait until after a run at a school. He's always been awesome to get us the van, but now this will just take that off of both of our shoulders.
Okay. Are you?
Mr. Bailey?
I just think my biggest question is, does each department have a van? When we talk about transportation, because you're saying, and that wouldn't be a you question, just because if we're talking about transportation for each department and borrowing vans, let's say.
So nutrition has, so nutrition has those vehicles? Are they?
For deliveries, right?
Yeah, for deliveries, for large deliveries. They have a freezer vehicle, also a refrigerated vehicle, that they use at different intervals if they're picking up stuff that we can't get delivered.
Yeah.
And it needs to be refrigerated. If we're doing an outside event, like a food giveaway, and we do that, sometimes it'll be in the summer, we're going to have a refrigerated truck, and then we can set it up, and it will have a low, small temperature, things like that. Rouse, campus rooms, they got trucks, little vans, little box trailer, and the logistics side distribution, they have three vans, two small vans, two little units, and then we do like this.
So we have enough transportation amongst these departments? Only reason I was asking, because let's say if there was a emergency or something in, let's say, the technology department, and they needed to get out.
Yeah, there's six vehicles in nutrition, which is what Scott's been using, and also using the refrigerated truck in the summer to move large quantities, I use a lot of metal to get to schools such as Academy. There's.
That's all I do.
The timing was one of my concerns, so this is getting paid out of the current budget. It's not next year, so.
Correct.
Because there's dates in here, February, but this pricing is.
This, so this, this pricing is, this is the updated pricing, because it actually went up from the last one, but I actually had a conversation with Ken the other day, and they're sending an update, because there was a piece on here, and we'll have the updated quote. Something changed on the bulkhead. It was like $100 less, so there's a little bit of a change in the price, nothing crazy, but I'll have an updated quote for the full committee on Monday night.
The date just looks.
Yep.
Looks.
Well, that was the original, that was the original date of the van that we could have had right then and there, but then we had to cancel our subcommittee meeting, and then it got sold via cash.
Correct. My only concern with that is, it's April.
Yep.
So if it was truly that was what was going on, then we could have had a subcommittee meeting the following week to get this in the queue, we would have already had it. So I get it.
That was my fault, because I don't.
All I'm saying is, it looks like you got a February, we wanted to do this in February, but we're.
I'll have it updated.
So I think it's important to do for the purposes of the work, but where, what is your vehicle, your technology vehicle for you personally? Where is it?
It's my personal car.
So because you have to travel around, I thought I recalled in negotiations that you were going to get a vehicle. Was that?
No.
No.
No, we never decided that. We. He asked for the travel.
Yep.
And we decided to float that into my salary.
Float that into my salary instead.
So the reimbursement for, I couldn't hear this thing.
He asked, I know, it's very loud, but he asked for, in the past, we had been giving people the allowances for travel, and what the committee decided was to loop that into their salaries instead, and that's what we did.
I recall a conversation about a vehicle to go back and forth, so that if that's an option, it doesn't have to be a van.
Yep.
Like this, but we were talking about the smaller.
Like the attendance cards.
Like something like that. We can just take a look at it, go back to the records and see, we appreciate it. So no other questions on the van?
No.
All right, move right on. NutriKids upgrade?
NutriKid upgrade. So I'll be very quick with this one. Right now, we're using a server. Student data is on that server. Transactions are on that server. If that server goes down, we're in trouble, because they only do one cloud backup. What NutriKids is now offering is a cloud-based solution. That cloud-based solution is redundant times 10, because it's on their server farms, and it also allows us to not have to worry about our equipment failing in the event of a storm or any of that. We don't have to worry about purchasing a $40 server. When this one is ready to go in a few years, everything is cloud-based. They only do the upgrade during school, when school is in session, because it is literally going to be a flip of a switch, and then they're going to give us access to our onboard cloud server. I've talked to five or six technology directors throughout the state, and they wish that they would have done the upgrade sooner, because the ease of use has just been, you know, fantastic. The other piece that this allows us to do is we can get a, an iPad, anything. If we're going to sell tickets to a sporting event or a play, we can have a button put in there, and we don't have to pay third-party people, because we already have it. That would just be on the background. Mr. Almeida and I would set up where the money would route to, but we'd be able to sell tickets to events. We could even take in, you know, damage fees for a broken screen. It could go through that system and be tracked in the system and then routed, however the money routes, but it gives us options. It's a.
Any questions?
No. My only question is, can we have, do we have that kind of money inside of the nutrition company? Thank you.
Next?
This next one is a little complicated, because in August, we came, Mr. Pacheco and I came to you, there was a need to put a sound system in at the new football stadium. When we did it at the time, we went through a contractor who announced to us, we did not know, only sold the equipment, did not install the equipment. So we had gone through, the committee had approved it, nothing was done, the money was just sitting there, we never used any of it, because they wouldn't do the work. So we had to go back to the drawing board to find a company that would come in and do this kind of complex system. We talked about having Mr. Mellow, Alex, try to install it for us, but with the ringing of the speakers.
Did we buy the equipment?
We did not.
So we didn't spend any?
We hadn't spent any.
Just move right on.
Okay.
So like, bottom line is, I'm just, because we can read this in summary.
Yeah, so bottom line is.
What I read was, we need a.
We need the sound system.
Professional sound system across that entire.
Correct.
Complex.
And it'll fill the whole.
And it's all just for audio. There was one in the audio visual. We're not doing boards and not like that.
Audio, just audio.
Just audio, $76,000 for the whole place.
Correct, yep.
Any questions?
No.
Next.
Promethean Board Purchase, twenty-five oh one, we're going to, either way, however we move, the third and fourth floor, I need to put the boards in. I don't have them. Um, this is a sole source purchase, a hundred and ten thousand would complete the whole, um, building and it would give me back five that I used over the summer that I keep as district spares. In the event that one went down, we could get a classroom back up, so this is
Question on twenty-five oh one.
Yes.
So I think it's important for us to know, we're gonna fill that building with work because we, that's up in the air as well.
Yes.
So I don't wanna be voting on something that we're not gonna use, that we either gonna fill that building or not, cause I'm not voting for something
We are.
That we're not filling that
We're filling it, we're gonna fill it with children, whether or not that's, depends on, that's the task force, but it's gonna open as a building. So I need to outfit the rooms with the technology.
This was more for her.
The plan is to fill the building, absolutely.
Right, just so you understand the point, I can't be saying, well, Wavy will do this, what if a bunch of parents show up and say they don't like it? What if, at some point, we have to make a decision? And we bought the building, we have to, so I'm totally in favor of this, but just beyond notice. If we pay for this and we don't have kids in there, it's not gonna be a good situation. Any other questions?
Nope.
Next.
Uh, next is just for information purposes for you guys, you can read through it. Um, we're coming to the end of our district technology plan, um, so we'll be, um, starting to, uh, construct our new five-year plan moving forward.
I think that's on, I think you jumped over a bunch, no?
No, I bun- I, um,
No, Promethean
Oh, you bundled the purchases.
To refer.
I can do, I'll, I'll go by the agenda then, that's fine.
The next one is aged out Chromebook plan?
Okay, so aged out Chromebook play, I was just going, by the way, I had it in my book, book.
So what, do we have to vote on those, cause there was a lot of purchases?
Uh, no, that one wasn't a purchase, it was just an FYI. Um, this next one is also just an FYI, there's no cost to it on the aged out Chromebook. Um, met a company at MasQ called Micros Northeast, they have a giant facility in Woburn, Massachusetts. What they do is they come down and they take all of our old Chromebooks and they basically will Frankenstein to get me a number of spares. Every building is now covered one-to-one. Uh, what I'd like to do is I have just north of forty-one hundred older devices that with some repair, repair that we don't have time to do in-house because it's very demanding with the small circuitry. This company will come out, grab all four thousand, they'll go through, my number is to them, I'd like to have two thousand working out of those four thousand. Then what they'll do is they'll take the remaining parts, they'll leave them there for us. And as we have devices that need to be repaired, they will use those parts for us. And right now, what I have to do is a technician every day at the end of their shift takes between twelve and fourteen Chromebooks to Walgreens on Rhode Island Avenue to ship them out for warranty repair. Won't have to do that anymore because this company is a warranty repair provider. So they'll literally come down twice a week to us directly, pick up the devices, give us the loaners, and then return them when they're repaired. So there will be a cost to this, but it's not something, there's no number right now, they don't wanna retain a fee. When I get the two thousand back, they'll let us know a price before they fix anything. They're gonna say to me, Mr. Cabral, for you to do those two thousand with what you've given us, it's gonna be fifteen thousand dollars to fix. So we get two thousand spares. And again, that would be something that would come to this committee and the full committee first. I just want to go ahead to start to utilize this company, um, so that we can get a move on some of these devices that I know that I can't in good faith repair in-house because there are just too many.
Questions? What are you doing with the, I thought we were already doing this with some other company?
Uh, so we're doing this right now with Dell, we're do, well
You told me there was another company at one point.
So those are, the, those are the Chromebooks that are DOA, cannot be fixed, they just buy them for parts. That company is since Chromebook parts, they don't buy them anymore. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna look at this now because a lot of the companies don't wanna buy it because there's no use to them anymore, so it's just for parts. So that's why this company, um, a lot of the districts are moving to because they're just gonna fix our stuff and it's not gonna cost us great amounts of money to have spares.
Next?
Replacement, yeah, replacement screens. I apologize because I went through a different thing here. The replacement screens are just to, um, purchase, um, B-grade screens, touchscreens, because we have touchscreens in all of our schools. The screens are the piece that on a warranty repair, um, do not get covered. That is something that I can repair in-house, it takes a tech about thirteen minutes to replace a screen. These are available now and I wanted to purchase them now before the summer when every district is trying to get them. Um, that dollar amount is, uh, twenty-five thousand nine seventeen.
How much did each one cost?
Um, they're between a hundred and twenty-five for the B-grade and a hundred and sixty-five for the newer ones, the little bit bigger. Um, and, and that's unbelievably cheap because I was getting them at two and three hundred dollars a screen.
And you said we, so all of our Chromebooks are touchscreen?
All of our Chromebooks in the elementary levels are touchscreen, yeah.
The little ones.
The little ones.
And that costs how much? How much would a new one cost?
A new s- a new Chromebook?
Yeah.
Uh, they're going up, so about three hundred and fifty bucks.
The screen seems like a lot of money for, but it's a touchscreen, so
Well, I haven't, it's a touchscreen and, and I'll be honest, the, the damage has dropped down to hardly anything. It's been the best year as far as damage. This is accidental, exactly. This is accidental damage, the cases have been great, but I need to have the screens ready because I don't want the Chromebook to be out of the kids' hands.
And if they break it, they pay?
Correct.
And that's working auto pay?
Yep.
So you sign off some?
Sign off, and there really hasn't been that much to pull in because a lot of it has been accidental damage. There have been a couple of heavy hitters that we've dealt with, but, um, the damage has, it's been a blessing cases.
So when I say sign offs, because we had referred that a while back, that
Yep, the sign offs are coming into the school.
You told us a hundred percent was gonna be done?
Yep.
And then we didn't have even anywhere near a hundred percent, so maybe you can just get us an update?
I'll get you an updated number, yep. Which I actually had. All right, the last one.
Next is Pocket Talk Translation?
Pocket Talk Translation is this device right here. So we have been, as a district, trying to find a device to help in Pace and in classrooms. What this device does is allows you to talk into it real-time. So if I talk into it in English, it'll translate it to one of the eighteen-hundred languages that are on this device, back and forth with the parent. So the plan here was to have a kit of thirty for the Pace Center. So if they had a, an event out in the public, each person could have one and they put their little earphone in and as I'm talking, it would translate it into the language that they are listening, that they are accustomed to. And then also to have five of these devices at the main office of every school. So that way, if a parent came in for a meeting, that Mrs. Cabral could have this one and be talking to, you know, Devin in a meeting. Another parent could come in and talk to a vice principal and be going from English to Creole, um, any of it, real-time so that each building had a way to translate instantaneously. Uh, and I've been playing with the unit, um, I brought it to Maria's office and it's pretty impressive what it does. Um, I unfortunately can't connect it to the internet in here because we're updating the wireless as we speak. Uh, but this is something that I can bring for the whole committee on Tuesday just to have a, I can show you guys at the microphone, have a conversation. Um, they're about two hundred and twenty bucks a piece, they have wireless built into them, they have a cell phone.
Do we have one for each house?
I, I can try to get one to, for the, for that night, yeah, to, to try it.
What is it, is it a one-time fee?
So the two hundred and twenty one-time fee, the cellular goes away after two years and what all the districts do is they just tie it into their wireless. Um, it's all AI-driven and as a new language comes out, um, they install it real-time and then there's software on the backend, cause this'll buy us about two hundred or so of them. Um, what'll happen is the software, we can see serial numbers where they were last used, who they were assigned to. And I really do see this in the future, um, being used, um, in the Pace Center a lot, especially when we're enrolling new students. This is gonna be a blessing to translate. It's very accurate.
And Pace has checked it out?
Uh, yeah.
The parent center has
Parent, uh, parent center has checked it out, um, Dr. Braunard and I have checked it out, uh, members of the central office team.
Are there any other districts using that?
Oh, they, it's unbelievable, they can't keep up right now.
So last, I'm not, we're catching up.
We're catching up.
Okay.
And if you, once you pay, how do they make money if you, it's a one-time fee, and like, if it's not a recurring subscription or something?
So
How do they make money?
The sales pitch was, you're gonna buy more and at some point, you're gonna want them for all of your EL students because they're that accurate, he said. And then there are also people using them in advanced history classes because they're actually translating into other languages and, uh, collaborating with students in other countries using these devices. So they make their initial money off the purchase and they're not worried because they said as soon as we buy
And there's something in there saying they're not gonna charge us
There's no, yeah, this after two years.
It just sounds too good to be true.
No, it's just a one-time fee.
Kevin, it really does.
Yeah.
It sounds crazy. It sounds too easy.
Well, uh, we'll move that one on with the, with the signed affidavit from you saying that we're not gonna get any big money later on.
Operating system for the update every year like that.
Next.
Yeah, you're gonna need
All right, so then the next one was, so, um, internet, so internet service provider is just an update. Uh, we sent out the Form 470s out to bid. Uh, our contract with Crown Castle was up at the end of this calendar year. We had three companies provide responses to the bid and Crown Castle again was, um, the low bid. And my recommendation is to move forward with them. They have been an amazing company over the last five years to work with, um, as far as our internet service provider. That was
So just a new, you're gonna renew?
It's a new contract for five years.
Okay. Next?
Um, I have, uh, Nutanix, um, so Nutanix is our cluster of servers that is at the new high school. Um, and basically, um, provides DHCP services, all of the backend security for the district. That's a license-based service. Um, we're coming to the end of our first three-year license. Um, to renew our, for three years is gonna be ninety-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. However, I wanna make known that, and I've had the conversation with Mr. Almeida, this is gonna be the last time that we renew this. We are going to look to, um, cut costs in the future. I can't forecast in three years what the technology is gonna look like, but stuff is changing and evolving on the daily. We're comfortable with this solution and it's secure, it's only three years old. We're gonna renew the licensing for three years and this time in three years, I'm gonna come back and either say we'd like to continue with Nutanix or something newer, greater is out there moving forward, but I'm just asking for, you know, our license renewal.
Yep, absolutely.
Next?
Um, and then the last one that has, um, funding, um, wrapped around it would be, um, the relocation of SIMS instructional technology and technology services. They're in three different locations, um, we would like to move all three and the district copy center to the old shipping and receiving area at the CUS Middle School, um, to the tune of just furniture. Everything else would be done in-house, there is some small low-voltage wiring that would have to be taken care of with my low-voltage electrician and low-voltage wire. Um, we'd have some electric that would need to be done that Mr., um, Pacheco, um, we've actually already talked about how we can speed that process up and pre-wire ahead of stuff. Um, we went with WB Mason because they are state contract, they actually drew out, you guys can look at and I can bring for the full committee. This would house all three facets of technology and the district copy center all in the one umbrella. Um, it would be the purchase of the furniture, right now, we're kinda hodgepodge, everybody has an old desk from here, from there. This would be the same look that's in Pace and also in the sped department. Um, this would also have an area for four spare cubicles, um, cause sometimes we have vendors that come in to work on the network or on projects. So I'd have a vendor area, we'd have a small break room for the employees, a large conference collaboration room, an onsite bathroom. As far as security, there's card access on the external side of the building as well as to get into the main building. And then there's also a large area where we would store, um, technology supplies and we'd have our break fix area. That to the tune of, um, just under two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the furniture. Um, and that would be a one-time cost and technology would have a home and they would not move anymore. Um, this for me, as, um, we would hope, that we hope, as building this department and putting in the, the blood, sweat and tears that I have to get this department to where it is, the one thing I feel that's missing is a home where they can all collaborate and be under one roof so that we can become that much more efficient moving forward. Uh, and also the plus is it would free up, oh, five or six rooms at Pace and it would free up two large rooms at Two-Ninety Rock for expansion, for RPA, uh, for expansion, classroom expansion at Pace, whether it be three K, whatever age group it would be, but it would open up a lot of space in that building.
Questions?
What's down there now?
So right now, it's just being used as storage, uh,
It used to be Russ's old space.
So right now, there's some cardboard that needs to be recycled, there's old furniture from an old TV studio. So all of that would get, we actually had a plan to start on April vacation. The only thing, we can't phase out of there yet because of Mother Nature, we have some pallets of salt. As soon as the weather breaks, that'll get moved up to the garage stall outside and then we're good to go. Uh, we're looking at about an eight-to-twelve week lead time on the furniture once the contract is signed. So, um, we would more than likely be ready to go out of this facility for the start of this school year.
So that's deliveries, that's everything you go
Delivery, installed, the only
And there's access for deliveries to go right as that
Right in, so I could actually take delivery of Chromebooks right into this facility. Some of this stuff would still go to Russ, just because I'm not gonna have all that type of space and Russ does an amazing job of the inventory for us, but the bigger shipments would come directly into us.
So everybody, everybody in the tech department would be out there.
Everyone in the tech department. I would also, I mean, my office is at Rock, but I also have a space where I could go and work with the team. Satellite location so that I can be with the team so we can collaborate and move things forward.
Are you?
Any questions?
I think my only question is, is the only cost is the furniture?
So we're gonna have some cost on wiring, but on that side, we always have spare wire. So like, I have enough wiring that I can get the network down there. And on the electrical side, we have plenty of Romex, BX, all that stuff, the piping that we can make work. We may need a onesie, twosie thing, but not thousands of dollars worth of stuff.
Yeah, I, now, but, probably I just think that would be the only thing, is just looking at how that looks and questions?
So, and, and same question, Mr. Adiyah, like, this, this budget, right? It'd be
Yes, this budget.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
The, uh, I, it sounds like a good plan, I, I just, I've been here long enough to know, how many times have we moved? People, we've done, like, we moved and we moved and we moved and we fixed and we knocked down and we fixed. It really just gets frustrating and I, I just don't know how to, how do we know that it's not, like, this has been vacant. We've used, uh, North Main Street for Mr. Lewis for a couple of years now.
Right, yeah.
So this place has been vacant, so why didn't we do this two years ago? In that same time, we were building Pace.
But, but we do need to put a roof on that building. That has to, that work has to be done also, and we're gonna do some work at Pace. Classroom expansion, create some space there, so now we're going to go in there and utilize.
And, and, and true, true, full transparency, Mr. Pacheco and, uh, superintendent, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. Um, we have talked about places to move. The problem was the department got so big so quick after COVID and it was just, we segmented them that way because that's the only thing we could do. And then Ken and I actually walked through this space for something totally separate. We were actually walking through for something to do with the alarm system and we saw the space and then we started to talk back and forth. And this is the creation of it and, and I think it'll be a perfect space for the team.
But that accelerates my concern, that says, we moved two years ago to the tech people to the Pace Center.
Some, not all.
Some, not all.
Or whatever, like, you created, whatever you're saying we're gonna now get rid of. We created at some point.
Well, we piecemealed them.
Well, I, I think, if I could just jump in, so there was also a plan to use that low level for a CTE program. The issue is, is we have space in the school pop rooms here for the CTE program, which is a common piece, um, that is already available. So when we, we do that space, downstairs area, I don't believe this, this sort of education
It's just two of them, it's just, it's three of them.
One window, but it's not a great airy room. And also with adults down there, we have room, we have alarms, we have other sections, um, we have fire system down there. So it, it needs to be secure and we want students to be down, getting into those areas. Um, they're secure enough for the adults, but, you know, students can get
You can understand my point of the moving back and forth.
Oh, I agree, and, and again, moving, moving, so if, if tech was the size that it used to be, then this would be a colossal waste of space.
Correct.
It's too small for what we had in it, because we had to separate it into two different schools. And that was of course effective because you were running from one school to the other, picking up supplies and then going to a school. Now it plus, and the rest of, uh, the distribution team can get at what they need in front of them. As Scott said, the inventory piece is phenomenal now. So if we don't only have
And we're leasing that, right? How long is that lease for?
Leasing that space, uh, we've got one more year left and then we hope to renew.
So I would say as part of this, we need to figure that out at the same time before we start filling up. So if we, if we're gonna say we're gonna pay that lease, if it's a reasonable lease, if I recall, that's what you said.
It's very reasonable.
Then why don't we look, look at more long-term if we're doing a plan? Then now we stuck with it and then they, now they got us against the wall, we don't know where to put, so. As part of filling the last, I would say, bring that forward to try to get a, an extension.
You can have a proposal together, probably for, when you make the next, this, you know.
Yeah. My only other concern is that if you're gonna do it, I think you need to, I, I don't know what that's, is that just show cubicles like the So I would say that you should be looking at, there's certain positions that need a, an office closed in office.
And we have that.
So, uh, Department, so, the details, I'm just saying, that's where I think it needs to be, so that not everyone, you know, you're a director, sometimes you gotta have personal conversations or whatever, this, we can't have anybody having, uh, a cubicle. And Mr. Pacheco's point, and I don't even know the space, but if there's one window, that tells me that there can be more windows.
Well, there's only one outside wall, and that window is on the out, there's a double door, an entrance door, oversized and luxurious, you can get a floor.
So we can't have any more windows to give them a little bit of, uh.
It's an outside area, so it's internal and it's underground, so.
So ventilation, like, they're, they're gonna do something to make sure that they're safe, working in here.
Yeah.
The proper.
Yeah, it's a fully, um, comfort area and fully, um, lighting. It, it has everything except for that natural light.
And currently.
And they store three.
Currently, they have no natural light anyway, um, the techs have, they have the old, um, I don't even know what you wanna call that, not much light gets through that anymore. Uh, yeah, that skylight, and Brian's team has no windows all, i, either, so.
Yeah, that sounds good to me, and that's the last one on the group.
That's the last one to refer.
Looking for a motion, uh, refer these to the full committee.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Lowery, second by Mr. Bailey, all in favor? I oppose, so voted, thank you. Next up?
These next pieces are just for your information, our technology plan is sunsetting, um, and we're a little behind because it's been crazy with MCAS, so I'd like to get moving on this, I just shared some information with you all. Um, we are in the process right now of formulating a committee to go over some of these key points that I put in here that you can, you can read, I can talk about with you, um, but the plan will be, um, a five-year plan moving forward with, um, soup to nuts, basically, where we are, what we like that worked in our old plan, what we'd like to see implemented in the new plan. Um, it'll also have, um, budget forecasts so that we know what we need to expect for licensing, um, equipment rollout and refresh, um, throughout the next five years. Um, it was more just for your information, and I'd like to be able to come back to the committee, um, in the next couple of months with a more, um, detailed draft plan moving forward for technology.
Questions? No. I, you know what my question's gonna be, you know, comments are gonna be there, this is too old, and we're way behind, you know, I think this committee does a, and the work is, you know, the department is doing a good job with a lot of things, this is woefully inappropriate, that, um, whatever you wanna call it. So we're way overdue for having this tech plan, we talked about it a little bit, but COVID happened, all these other things, all those are excuses. We just need this done now, so I don't wanna say you got thirty days for the next subcommittee meeting, but maybe sixty days? And we come back and put this on?
It's actually, it's already, it's already happening, I just want it to be.
Within, within sixty days, so we don't want this to go to the next school year and have it to be, um, because there's a lot of things on here that, you know, we, we added all this stuff, that what we're looking at is all old.
Yep, and that's why I wanted to share it with you.
We could piece together all the other info, but I would say, within sixty days, we need to have another meeting.
No problem.
Next up?
All right, so the next piece is, um, again, looking at the tech plan, looking at the website. Um, I'd like to begin an implementation plan for reviewing and refreshing the school website. Um, whether or not that be stay with the same vendor, look at a different vendor, look at the way that we use the website. Um, this plan, the team is being put into place now, it's gonna be led by, um, Frank Farias because he was the original, um, architect of the first website, and I just put something in there just for your, you know, for your eyes. If you were to have an outside company come in and do something, first year total would be forty-five grand, and then they would host, they would charge us after. I'm not saying that that's the avenue that we wanna go with, I was just showing you guys what the going rate right now is on the market. I do anticipate that we will stay with a, a very similar vendor that we use now, where it's more of a drag-and-drop process, but this process, I wanna, uh, take into account all people, so students, staff, all the stakeholders, parents, community members, everyone as we do this. So I just wanted to give you the heads up that we're in the process of a review, and, um, I'd like to come back in that sixty days with, um, some ideas as well with the website as well as our tech plan.
Any questions?
No.
The, uh, only question I have is on the, um, the current website. We've had meetings six months ago, eight months ago, where we said we were gonna hire somebody to do the work, to do the PR type stuff or whatever, and that all the website was gonna be updated, so I used to find on a regular basis, I'd just been too busy to be looking at it. Are we making headway with that?
We are making, we are making headway, um, there are some areas in the website where those pictures are that Frank can have a conversation offline, where we have to try to fill in that space better, um, but that's why we wanted this review, because as you start to peel back the layers, there are more things there that really shouldn't be there anymore, so we wanna streamline it and just like clean it all up.
We've used DeSardina to do a lot of what you're saying.
Even basic updates, like, there's things on there that just don't belong there, and then they, like, on our own site is terrible.
We do cleaning up some.
Like, our stuff is, you know, it, it, so there has to be a better system of how to find things than.
And the software is now getting more user-friendly, when Frank built this website back in the day with Final Site, it was very difficult, and he'll say it was a task. The software is getting a little bit more user-friendly now, what we wanna do is we wanna try to standardize the way every school has the same areas that they can update, so that way it's not running out of control.
Right, it's not all over the ones, yeah.
Correct.
Can you please send us who your task force is gonna be specifically?
I will, for both, for both, I will.
So, you said Mr. Farias is gonna take the lead, but I would like to say, look, so him and these three, five people are gonna be on it, then we can know
No problem.
who's making the calls.
No problem.
Uh, next up is Lightspeed, is that on?
Yes, so currently we use Lightspeed Relay in the classrooms, that's our software that we use for filtering for the Chromebooks, whether be on school site or at home. In the past, we had used Social Sentinel, um, which has sunsetted, um, very clunky software, would let us know if a student was thinking about inflicting self-harm, or if there was gonna be a fight, it would look for keywords. We currently, in our system of Lightspeed, um, have alert, and we're in the process of turning it on, and I just wanted to give this, an FYI to this committee, and then FYI to the full committee. Basically, this is gonna look for keywords and it will notify, we're in the process now internally of having each building administrator highlight people that they would like notified of self-harm, fight, these type of things. So we're in that process, Mr. Farias and I are building the backend, and it's, the system is going to go live, um, immediately following April vacation. So what'll then happen is the alerts will go to those building-based administrators, and if there are certain keywords, it would go up further than that, um, to a, you know, a central-based administrator if we were looking at like a major issue. It also has the option to scan off-hours, and we pay for as part of it, human review, that it wouldn't be our people. So if an individual was thinking about inflicting self-harm at two AM, it wouldn't necessarily call myself as the principal. It has a full team of former police officers, psychologists, school personnel, that's what they get paid to do twenty-four seven. Then in that case, it would roll out the after-hours plan, and it would notify the superintendent or whoever we deemed on that list. We're not turning that piece on yet because they recommend that we turn on locally first and then turn on the after-hours piece. So that's something that we're, we're working out internally, um, how we're gonna roll that piece out, but I just wanted to make you aware that we're gonna roll out the internal piece immediately following April vacation.
Any questions?
Didn't we approve something like this?
So we, so we did.
So this was Lightspeed, right?
This was Lightspeed, uh, so we've paid for it, we've been building the backend, but we've been using both softwares, and now that Social Sentinel is totally sunsetted, we're gonna fully turn this on, because when you run both, it gives a lot of faults.
I didn't know it wasn't totally turned on.
Well, it, it's, it's turned on, but what happens is it gives false positives because each software looks at, at the same time, so we didn't wanna overwhelm somebody with like seven different alerts from two different softwares.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I think my thing, I was just gonna say, looking at the twenty-four, uh, hours hotline is tapping into the police station because they do have mental specialists on board, um, and obviously our SROs, but that was pretty much it.
When the, so, can you get to us the, Social Sentinel is something that we never even knew about, we just bought that a couple of years ago?
That's, that's what we had.
That's prior to Mrs. Potts, so.
Our, yes, prior to her administration.
What is this, so, can you just give us a little history from, from Monday night to say?
Sure.
This is what we had, this is what we paid, this is the timeline, this is when we bought Lightspeed, this cost us X amount of dollars, and it's now going live, it's just, it seems like we, we sometimes pay for things and we don't even know it, so giving us the info at home.
Okay.
And that's just information, right?
That's just information.
Yeah.
Next up is any new business? No new business, we do have a need for an executive session, subject to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A four, to discuss deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect there too. So we, uh, motion to go into executive session, made by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Lowery, all in favor? I, oppose, so voted. All of us leaving back to order, roll call, please.
Mr. Agan?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Lowery?
Here.
We're here, motion urgent, motions made by Ms. Lowery?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey, roll call.
Mr. Agan?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Thank you all, have a great night.
Thank you all.